This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at our town meeting this evening. I'm Mike Frida, your first selectman. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, our town clerk Stacy Yarborough, who normally conducts this business meeting, is unable to conduct tonight's meeting. She had some surgery today. She's doing fine. So, my role in the beginning here is to have a temporary town clerk appointed to handle the matters of tonight's meeting. As such, and with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion, a nomination, for a temporary town clerk this evening.
Would you like to nominate Gary Johns?
The nomination is Gary Johns. Gary is our town assessor, understands the inner workings of the government very well. Is there a second?
I'll second that nomination.
There is a second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. Mr. Gary Johns.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Gary Johns. I'm the temporary North Haven town clerk for the purposes of this evening's annual town meeting. Pursuant to the North Haven Town Charter, Chapter 9, Sections 1-01, as stick with our... This annual town meeting will now please come to order.
Closer, closer to the mic.
Did everybody hear what I said earlier?
No.
Alright. I'm Gary Johns. I'm the temporary town clerk for the purposes of this evening's annual town meeting. Pursuant to the North Haven Town Charter, Chapter 9, Sections 901, this annual town meeting will now come to order. Before we do anything further, we must elect a moderator. The moderator is nominated and elected by the members of this meeting. It is the moderator's function to bring before the meeting all items of the warning and to assist in obtaining the objective of the meeting, while ensuring the rights of the individual voters who wish to be heard. The moderator's duties shall include helping any member of the meeting who seeks clarification or to advise them with regard to parliamentary procedure. Further, when it is time to vote on any issue tonight, including moderator, including moderator, please be aware to vote... Please be aware to vote, one must be an elector. To be an elector of a town, he must be a registered voter in town at the time of the recent election or one who pays taxes on the town with an assessment of property not less than $1,000 on the most recent grant list assessment date, as well as a citizen of the United States and 18 years of age voter. If you are unsure of your voting eligibility, please check with me anytime tonight, and I will confirm your status. The floor is now open for nominations for the meeting moderator. Nominations for the floor will be heard at this time.
I'd like to nominate Teresa Vili.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a second for Teresa Vili?
Second nomination.
All in favor, please vote, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Teresa? You have moderator of this meeting.
Welcome to the town meeting tonight. My name is Teresa Ranciatto-Vili. The town clerk will now read the warning and call of tonight's annual town meeting.
Notice is hereby given of the annual town meeting of the Town of North Haven to be held on Monday, September 20th, 2021, in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street, North Haven, at 7:00 to consider an act upon the following: A. To consider an act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance to adjust appropriations of certain line items among the various departments. Alright. I'll try again. The first resolution, A. To consider an act upon a resolution... Is this on now? To consider an act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendations of the Board of Finance to adjust appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget, transferring amounts over $20,000 in a total sum of $945,456.68. Resolution B. To consider an act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen, sorry, recommending to the town meeting the discontinuance pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 13A-49 of a 3,213 square foot portion of Selat Street as a town road. C. To consider an act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the naming of the newly constructed athletic field at Vanacore Field as the Anthony Longley Athletic Facility, dated at North Haven, Connecticut, the 2nd day of September, 2021.
Okay, guys. Alright, you're gonna get your chance to vote on it. Right now, though, the town clerk, we have to go through all this for, you know, general purposes administrative. The town clerk will now read our first item of the night, Agenda Item A.
Agenda Item A. To consider an act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance to adjust appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget, transferring amounts over $20,000 in the total sum of $945,456.68. Resolved that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Finance, adjust appropriations of certain line items among the various departments in the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget, transferring amounts over $20,000 in the sum of $945,456.68. May I have a motion to discuss the resolution? Is there a second?
Second.
Now we've come to the point of the meeting when we open the floor for discussion of this agenda item. So, the rules for discussion are as follows for this as well as the other two items. Anyone who wishes to speak will get a chance to comment before anyone will be called a second time. You must come forward to the microphone, state your name and address before you begin to speak. Discussion will be limited to that item only, and we ask that you limit your questions and discussion to no longer to five, maybe 10 minutes. Remember, after everyone has had a chance to speak, you may have another turn. Before there's discussion on this item A, I'd like to call Ed Swankowski up.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ed Swankowski, the Towns Director of Finance. And as soon as they bring up the slide, I'll just go give you a rough overview of what's on it. Alright, as you can see, we're looking to approve $945,000 of transfers that are over $20,000 between the departments. These 11 items have already been approved by the Board of Finance, and they're just waiting finality here at the town meeting. The first several items, central facilities, custodial maintenance, most, all of that really has to do with COVID, whether it be the supplies, the extra cleaning, masks, etc. Then if you look in the middle there, you'll see fire contractual replacement staffing. That has to do with replacing staff whilst five or six of the firefighters, paramedics, were out with COVID. If you move on to the next line, the transfer station recycling, I'm calling, that is all related to the storm from last year, the cleanup of the debris. Let's see, the sanitation tipping fees, as Mike has reiterated many times, across the country, the cost of these tipping fees have gone up drastically. So, that's why you see $297,000 there. And the last item, the last big item, is the debt. As part of our refunding, we had to pay additional principal on some of the debt, but we achieved significant savings in interest going forward, and that was just an item that we couldn't have anticipated and we budgeted. So, that's why we ended up with that item being over $137,544. But as I said, these have already been approved unanimously by the Board of Finance, and we're just waiting approval here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to Agenda Item A tonight? Please signify by raising your hand. Selectman Frida.
Thank you very much, Ed. To simplify what you see here, ladies and gentlemen, we have approximately 500 line items in our budget. These 11 items, out of 500, were over $20,000 over what was budgeted. Tonight's meeting is a procedural meeting to get your support to vote this through. It's been approved, as Ed said, by the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to Agenda Item A? Did I see a hand in the back? If there's anyone who wants to speak, just come up to the microphone. Seeing no hands. All in favor of calling the question for Agenda Item A, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. The motion passes. All in favor of Agenda Item A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion passes. The town clerk will now read our next item on the agenda.
Agenda Item B. To consider an act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the discontinuance pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 13A-49 of a 3,213 square foot portion of Selat Street as a town road. Resolved that in accordance with the recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section 13A-49, the 3,213 square foot portion of Selat Street described in the quitclaim deed approved by the Board of Selectmen at its May 6th meeting, the May 6th, 2021 meeting, is hereby discontinued as a town road, and the First Selectman is authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate said discontinuance. May I have a motion for this resolution? Is there a second?
Before we start discussion for this second item, I'm gonna ask Lynn Sadowski to please get up and speak.
Thank you, Teresa. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Lynn Sadowski. I'm the Director of Public Works for the Town of North Haven, and I work on a variety of projects, one of them being this economic development project with Selectman Frida. There is a development proposed for 28 Nettleton Avenue, and we are proposing as part of tonight's effort to essentially discontinue 3,200 square feet, which is the very end of what's called Selat Street. If you don't know where it is, it's off Lewis. It is off Quinopeiac Avenue, you know, from Nettleton. And essentially, we are proposing that we discontinue that small piece so that we can bring through the economic development project that we have on board. And we have gone through our planning and zoning, our Board of Selectmen, and that's what we're here for tonight. I have a map if anybody would like to see it. And that's about it. So, we look for your support. Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak to this? First, Selectman Frida.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Lynn summarized it very well. In short, ladies and gentlemen, what this means is that we will be bringing in a new business to North Haven from another city as part of our overall economic development strategy to grow our top-line revenue. Thank you, Lynn.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to Agenda Item B? Seeing no hands, we will go directly to vote on this resolution. All in favor of Agenda Item B, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. The town clerk will now read our final item of the night, Agenda Item C.
Agenda Item C. To consider and act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the naming of the newly constructed athletic facility at Vanacore Field as the Anthony Longley Athletic Facility. Resolved that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, the newly constructed athletic facility at Vanacore Field is hereby and hereafter named the Anthony Longley Athletic Facility. May I have a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The first speaker tonight to this item C is going to be First Selectman Mike Frida.
This is an emotional topic for me, ladies and gentlemen, so I'd like to apologize in advance. I'll try to hold my composure. On December 8th, 2019, North Haven lost a wonderful young boy, Anthony Longley, at 13 years of age. For 10 years, this remarkable young boy battled brain cancer. And during those years, it was a roller coaster of emotions that those of us that knew him, his friends, his friends' parents, his family, and the North Haven sports community went through a roller coaster of emotions that ranged from hope to anguish in one of the more provocative, compelling stories in recent memory in our town. During those years, those 10 years, particularly from around age 7 to 13, this young boy showed remarkable courage and conviction and actually became a role model for many of his teammates and the adults who saw him struggle through those years. A community rallied around him many times with various fundraisers in an effort to perpetuate that hope. Not only did Anthony play football, but was also involved with basketball and lacrosse. And it was one of his dreams to play for Coach Sagnella on the North Haven High School football team. He played youth sports. He was on the youth football team. And then our community lost him. So, a few months after December 8th, 2019, a group of parents asked to see me in Town Hall. And many of Anthony's teammates came along to meet me in that meeting. And one of the questions that they had for me was, was there a way that we can honor this remarkable young boy? And honor him and create a legacy for what he endured and his sports that he competed in? So, it was then and there in my office that we were exchanging ideas, and I came up with the what-if scenario. What if, as our concession stand is being rebuilt and refurbished, what if we considered naming the concession stand after him? I was clear in that meeting that the processes of government are such that we would have to get support, and via our town charter, we'd have to bring it to two public meetings. One, our Board of Selectmen, which we did, and this meeting, ladies and gentlemen, is the legislative body of the town. And this is the meeting that memorializes the vote where the residents make the decision. So, tonight, we gather here to honor this young man. And as we look back on his courageous battle in his life, he was truly, again, a role model to many. So, tonight, I support the naming of this concession stand. And thank you for allowing me to speak on Anthony's behalf.
Is there anyone who would like to speak to Agenda Item C? Name and address, please.
My name is Sal DeMeo at 260 Mill Road, North Haven. I am the President of North Haven Youth Football. I was one of Anthony's coaches.
Take your time.
Anthony was more than just an athlete. He was more than just a kid going through cancer. Anthony was, in my opinion, as close as any of us are gonna see to a real-life superhero. He battled more in his short time with us than is physically possible, if you ask any doctor. But he did it with a smile on his face. He did it with inspiring other people. He did it to use what he did and what he was going through as motivation to everybody that he met. I don't know anybody that's ever met Anthony and has thought anything different of him, to be honest. I was fortunate enough to coach him in two sports and some of the other people in the room in one. And, you know, there's no understanding of his passion for what he did, for his teammates, for his game. Even when he couldn't play, he would be there. He lived at that field. He made his parents hit that field all day. So, when the boys came to me and Chris Russo, to me, this is not even a question. It's something that should happen and needs to happen. So, I hope everybody here supports this tonight, and I hope it goes through without a hitch. I also think that those four best friends that started this process should speak next. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, gentlemen. Just give me your name and address as you start speaking, please. Go ahead.
As you guys know, our friend Anthony Longley passed away almost two years ago and was in love with football. He could not get enough of it. After his surgeries, the first question he would ask would always be, "So, when will I be able to touch the field?" When playing, Ant was rough. When he got hit, the coaches would ask, "Ant, are you okay?" And he responded with his classic, "I am good." One word we used to describe Ant was valiant. He was constantly in and out of the hospital, underwent surgeries and radiation, and did this all as a kid. And he never complained. He never made cancer an excuse not to do things. And when he was sidelined because of his condition, he wouldn't complain about not playing. Instead, he would cheer on the team with his enthusiasm. We are very proud that this concession stand is being dedicated in his name. The concession stand is very lucky to be named after our loving and caring friend, Anthony Longley. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any of you like to speak also? No? Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item tonight? Okay, first the gentleman in the front row, and then the lady in the second.
My name's Val Kroge. I'm at 125 Kings Highway. I'm on the board for the North Haven Youth Football, retired law enforcement out of North Haven. I knew Anthony. I know the family very well. I have the privilege of coaching with his father, being very close to his mother and father, and currently coaching his younger brother, Ryan. This really shouldn't even be a question. Anthony not only inspired us while he was here, he's currently still inspiring us. I use Anthony as an example constantly with my 7th grade boys now to make them understand that even when we think things are tough, they're not that bad. Anthony was constantly struggling, and you would never know it. The one thing that currently sticks in my mind now was when he was getting a little bit later, Anthony wasn't doing great, and I look over to the sideline during one of our practices, and he's there. He's on the sideline, struggling, and he's still there. Bert, his father, actually had to tell him to take a seat, and he fought with him. He didn't want to take a seat. He had had brain cancer. He was struggling. And he was still on the field, standing up, watching his little brother play football. I cannot think of another person anywhere in the state of Connecticut that I would be more privileged to have our concession stand named after. Anthony is the definition he holds what not only the football players in this town stand for, but what the parents stand for and what the town stands for. And the town should be honored to have his name on any building in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I wanted to come here tonight in support of...
Can I just have your name? Hold on, just name and address, please.
Demary Kennison, 196 Maple Ave. I wanted to come here tonight in support of the Longley family and in keeping Anthony's legacy alive at a place that was his second home. For those who don't know me, my name is Demary Kennison, and my younger brother was Matthew Jakes. He was chosen for Spring Brawl in 2013 and sadly passed in September of that year. In honoring his life and all that he loved, the Monwies Playground was named after him, and there is a bench there with his name on it. He loved nothing more than going to school and playing on that playground. So, it made perfect sense to continue his legacy in the place he loved so much. perfect sense to continue his legacy in the place he loved so much. That's why it makes complete and total sense to continue Anthony's legacy at the very place he loved most. I was incredibly lucky to know Anthony.
Sorry? That's okay.
He brought light back into my life when I needed it the most. I met Anthony during his Spring Brawl in the spring of 2014. As soon as I met him, we were instantly connected. I was future Miss Longley, and he was my little boyfriend. I coached the cheer team on Sundays that cheered for his football team, and every Sunday, there he was on that field, no matter what he was going through. Whether he was playing his heart out on that field or standing on the sidelines supporting his teammates and best friends, he was there on that field, one of the places he loved to be the most. That's why honoring his legacy and all the people he has touched, not just in the football community, but in the town of North Haven, makes sense for it to be there, next to that very field. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. I'm David Donnelly. I live at 11 Red Brick Lane. I know everybody has been pro-naming this Anthony Longley, and I am as well. I'm the Commissioner for the flag football program in town. Those are the smallest kids, the five, the six, the seven, the eight-year-olds. And I want there to be something that people can walk in and, and ask questions and say, who was Anthony Longley? Because people ask in this town, who's Vanacore? Who's Sinaway? And who are these people? And these are questions that I think are important, and for those of us that know, to be able to pass that along. This is a symbol of freedom behind us, and anybody that hears about Ryan, and hears about Bert, and hears about Kim, that knows the story, has a symbol of strength. And naming this concession stand, naming this after Anthony, I believe would do that. So if you're even considering saying nay, just consider hope and consider the pride and the story and the love that this really means. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? It's really, okay. It's just really dark when I look out there, so wave your hand if you want to speak. Thanks.
Chris Russo, 120 Beale Street. I got the privilege to coach Anthony for five years. Excuse me. It's pretty emotional for me to stand up here and talk about him. Throughout the five years that I got to coach him, there was a lot of ups and downs that he went through, through the season. But the one thing that he never did is he never gave up. To me, that's one of the biggest messages we can give to anybody that's going to see that name on that concession stand. As we go through it, it's the determination, the pride, the love for football, and the never-give-up attitude that we need to see out there. One of the things that we talk about in North Haven Youth Football, in North Haven Football in general, is a sense of family. Seeing by the outpouring of everybody here tonight, we've seen that family. That family has come out here to support Anthony and everything he does. I had the privilege of being able to coach Adam, Jake, Connor, and Ryan, along with Anthony for five years. They came up to me and Sal and asked about being able to do something for Anthony. When we went for Selectmen Frida, we came out to the concession stand, was the best thing that we can do. To me, that is a place where everybody is going to go to, it's going to be a place where he loved to be. And to have his name up there is not only for Anthony to show everybody in the upcoming years for what he stood for, but it's for everybody here that stood besides him. As we move forward, we all know we lost Anthony. It's emotional for all of us. But having that concession stand out there, it's going to kind of put the point at the end of the sentence that, from what he had, from what he showed, all of his teammates, his best friends, and everything else, that this is what we stand for as a town and a family. And like we said, in North Haven, and it's something that we end every cheer with, every football practice with, is the word "family." So thank you all for coming out here and supporting Anthony.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, just come on over. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, if you want to just come down and put yourself in the hallway, that would be great. Thanks.
I'm Stan Kobolansky from 33 Woodland Avenue, and I'm Anthony's grandfather. I don't want to let my emotions run away with me, but I just came up here to tell you so much thank you. That kid meant the world to me, and I'll never, ever, never forget him. Thank you all for coming.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing no hands. No, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Hi, name and address.
Steve DeMayo in Park Road, Hampton, Connecticut. I want to thank all of you people so much. You've done so much for my family, it can't be counted. I'm personally heartbroken over this, all these, this time. I just thank you.
We're going straight to voting on this resolution. All in favor of Agenda Item C, please signify by saying aye. Nay? I'm just going to say, this is, this is what makes North Haven great. I'm not supposed to say that, but as no further business to be considered at this annual town meeting, I hereby declare tonight's annual town meeting adjourned. The minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public by the Town Clerk as soon as possible. Thank you and good night.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.